Call to order, the regular meeting of the city council here to the city of Aransas Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, March 6, 2017, 7:00 PM. All rise for the location, please.
Lord, we ask for your blessings this evening for our community, for our people. We ask you to watch over our youngsters as they're growing up through the years here. We ask you to watch over our fire, public works, police department, everybody that helps the city move forward. We ask you to take a little extra time and give a little blessing to those that don't feel so well the last couple of weeks and the ones that have lost loved ones. We ask you for strength, knowledge, and the opportunity to move forward. In your name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every gain just as for all.
Before we continue with the consent agenda, we're gonna go ahead and move up our citizen's comments to the front of it to get it over with, what, three minutes? It's state your business, so stay direct if you don't mind. And the floor's now open for citizen comments.
I am Flores. I live at 1215 West Goodnight. And I have concerns about the 10-foot hike and bike trail. And this is by concerned citizens because I've been talking about. I've been talking to the neighbors. Okay. I know the route that was planned for Nelson and Palm Drive was rerouted because it left very little driveway available for parking. I know this would be the case in any residential neighborhood. On my side of the street, I have a lady and a special needs child, a disabled 83-year-old woman that is still driving, and a constant traffic flowing business is to the right of me. I have an 85-year-old woman that is still driving, a disabled man, and a business frontier with fiber optic underground wires and a gas pipeline to the left of me. Not to mention about 40 big trees in the span of about three and a half blocks that would have to be cut down, which in our neighboring cities have ordinances not to cut down trees of any kind or a fine will be issued. The school buses drop off, pick up children on the same side. Citizens of Aransas Pass are asking, why are they putting the trail in a residential area? And what would happen if we park on it? They don't issue tickets for parking in the wrong direction, cell phones, and disabled parking, to mention a few. Because as the disabled, because of us as disabled people would have to park on the side of our homes, which have us walking about 100 feet or more. To some of you, that might not be a big issue, but what they want to do, but what they want to do is even a tiny car as small as a Fiat 500 or a Smart Car would barely fit in front of our homes. We know that it would become dormant for the purpose it was intended for. Because Sunday, we were there, the dog park and the skate park, and it's a beautiful day. Sat there three hours, nobody used it. And so saying that, we would like to see it go down Wilson, down Avenue A, and McMullen to Charlie Marshall's School, because that's where the necessity is. A lot of our school and extracurricular activities, students would definitely use it. We need to think about the children and their safety. Thank you, citizens of Aransas Pass.
Thank you, Diane.
And I got a few pictures that I want for you to look at. I'll start here.
Do you want them back there?
Sure. This is what's on my side of the street, and these are all the big trees that would have to be cut down. This is on the opposite side of the street, which takes a couple of high source.
Thank you, Diane. So the only thing you're asking for is it to be rerouted? That's what your request?
Yes. I mean, to benefit the citizens and the kids and the students, because I see, and you can see the grass trails where the kids walk by. I mean...
Thank you.
Yeah, you can see the grass trails down Avenue A, and me and my granddaughter ride our bikes, and we go down Avenue A, and we just grinch, you know, we gotta get through there fast. And then we go, yeah, so it's dangerous.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bill Killian, Killian Caloromas, both will have a handout.
Yes, sir.
I sent this to the city manager. I mean, I don't know if he had time to use it coming up, but this is just something I was thinking quickly about. Thank you. So tonight on the items for, the agenda is the solid waste contract. I've been here several times to discuss that with you. Appreciate your time. There was a motion to table it for 120 days, and then I asked that perhaps it could be only from 120 days down to a month. I feel that if the vote happens tonight, there's, we haven't had a chance due to the circumstances around your previous city manager leaving. That's a tough thing for the city, and so we have never been called in, at least my firm has not been called in, to discuss the benefits and the true economic impact of our bid. And I, I understand that with the city manager leaving and a new one coming on, and I thought that the gentleman, Mr. Denton, who made the point about the extension, made some valid points that night, and I reiterated that two weeks ago at the meeting. I would like to come in and talk about the, about the, about the bid and why I think that our firm's financial offer long-term is better. The bid tab that's in front of you for tonight's vote, I think, does not take into consideration the franchise fee that we were prepared to offer as part of what the RFP called negotiations after the point of the proposal. We would be called in, be able to sit down and talk to the, to the staff about it. So I, I think that that, this, this form that I gave you points that out. So I think $23,000 were better when in the long run. Also, the RFP referred to a point system, the thing, pretty, pretty, pretty specific at how the bid would be awarded via the point system. I haven't seen any points on that. One of the things the city really stressed as a desire was unlimited cubic yards on the brush pickup. We offered unlimited cubic yards. Absolute Waste, which is on the agenda, is to be awarded to captive at 15 cubic yards. And I just think that the delay would probably be best, is again, I don't think four months is the best delay. I think maybe a month. I think a chance to come in and talk about our bids and explain them might be a good idea. Also, ours has the, we really wanna get involved in cleaning up that transfer, and then item two tonight is talking about an RFP for cleaning up of the transfer. My bid had in there to help with that. So I wouldn't spend money maybe through an RFP if our bid talks about throwing money at the assistance of cleaning that place up. So I would ask that the initial tabling of the motions still stay in effect, and if you don't vote on that tonight, and I'll re, again, I don't have all y'all's emails. I've emailed several that I could find through the chamber, but I'd come talk to you anytime. I know that Mr. Kepanee is a very busy man, probably more busy than he even likes right now, taking the reins of a, of a job that, like that in a quick term, but I'll, I'll be available for any, any, any discussions or questions or comments. That's my free message. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Mr. Kepanee, chief, residents, business stakeholders, Mike Reeves, Republic Services. Being here for 31 years, our company servicing your community, there's no accident that we've been here that long. I do agree that sometimes change can be good. So what I wanted to mention to you tonight is just add a couple of questions for you to think about before you make your decision tonight. I know all of you have to make a very important decision, but just remind you, when you change out banking services, it doesn't impact a lot of people, electrical providers and so forth. But this change residentially and commercially is going to impact your community. And the manner in which it's done, the timing, it can be very sensitive. The phones will light up, I promise you, if it's not done seamlessly. So I wanted to mention to you, I'm speaking on two points tonight. Number one, on behalf of Republic Services, which I'll do first, and then secondly, is your municipal manager, my opinion about this whole process. Company concerns, the RFP process, we would like to bring your attention that our concern is that the integrity of that process was not full. Few things that are unusual from RFP process was the timing that these vendors were allowed to submit a proposal, eight business days. Usually for something of this magnitude is 30 to 60 days. Because of that short window, you have a vendor who did not submit because they couldn't obtain corporate approval. And they were, they were a larger company like yourselves. Number two, the fleet, the trucks and equipment used to collect this community and service it, there was no request to show the age of the fleet on any of the providers. Are they gonna give you a truck from 1985, or is it 2011, or even newer? So think about those trucks on your streets. In our experience with the demands and requests of what the city has asked on the RFP, unlimited brush, bulky, twice-a-week garbage, and the commercial accounts, the number that you have in town, it's going to take six full-time trucks to do that successfully and consistently. Have you asked that question? If another company is chosen tonight, are they gonna do it with three? I think that's, that's an important one to consider. Also, the performance bond, I'm sure all of you are familiar with what that accomplishes. It protects the city in the event that the contractor defaults on their services. A city this large has always had $100,000 or higher. For some reason, the RFP moved it down to 80,000. Just so you know, that barely covers one month's garbage billing in the event that you have to find another provider. Something to think about. Also, the city manager former made it very clear in the, in the opening of the bids that the council was interested in a shorter-term contract. Both of the other companies in this room have submitted for five years. We did for three. So if you have other intentions down the road, if you're experimenting, that's a long term to commit to somebody. Also, just so you know, your brush volume as a community from your residents has increased by 53% since 2014. The amount of volume that they place out, we have continued to pick that up and adapt. So when we gave you a price, we're not the cheapest. We were the most expensive because we were asked to do unlimited brush and bulky. How can you plan for that? So we used law of averages, and we added an X factor to make sure that that price was true and valid, so we could be prepared for the unexpected. Also, it was mentioned earlier, the price was only 30% of this RFP consideration. You didn't issue a bid, you issued an RFP. So the difference is the criteria come into play. Customer service is one, community participation, recycling, emergency management, and replacement schedule. And on emergency management, God forbid if the big storm hits us someday, which we hope it never does, are these companies prepared to have resources, trucks, equipment, and personnel to remove the debris after the storm? Not before, after the storm, those critical points. This is important for you to think about for your community. So those are the company concerns, my opinion on this. Most of you know I've been on your chamber board for three years. I just completed my term. I love serving your community. We've helped the shrimpery, people take that for granted, for 31 years, as far as roll-offs and community participation and in-kind donations. We've helped your VFW, we've been involved in community cleanups and so forth. So my recommendation, after mentioning what I have, is you had someone suggest to you to table or postpone this item, or in fact, for 120 days. What's the rush? What has changed in two weeks after you've made a decision? In our business, when we make a decision, the gut reaction is usually the right one the first time. If you second guess that, sometimes it doesn't work out so well. So just ask yourselves, why did this change? What's this, what's the insistence? So the recommendation from us is to please consider honoring the postponement of this decision tonight, or you have the right to reject all bids. It's in your RFP. You can reject all the bids, and you can sit down and negotiate with the company that's been here for 31 years and find out what you truly, truly need for price value and consistency in service. Thank you for this opportunity tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, we did have a comment during his speech to the council from James Blackford online, this is through livestream, asked, brush pickup? There hasn't been any brush pickup in over two months. Is there any particular reason for this? I don't know if it's worth responding to.
Obviously, the company's service has been picked on, so we're prepared for that. There has been a delay in the brush pickup, and this has happened in all the years we've been here, most of you have experienced it firsthand. But we do have other trucks and drivers that can come fulfill that. We do communicate with the staff that there is a delay, and that happened last week, we spoke about that, that certain zones have had a delay. We brought in other drivers from another division in the valley, and we are collecting those residents in a sequence manner, so they will be picked up. An exception to that might be if they have construction debris mixed in with their pile. Unless we've seen that resident's pile, we don't know what their, their challenge is. It could be blocked by a vehicle, but I would be willing to bet that the staff in the city has a record of why this particular pile has not been collected. So other things would be if there was mixed garbage within the brush, we don't pick up garbage itself mixed in with brush or bulky items. So there's a couple of variables on that.
Okay, there's, there's a delay, so if it's during citizens' comments, I'll come back and share.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor, council, stop. Appreciate the opportunity, came a little earlier in the agenda than I thought it might, but always appreciate the opportunity to talk. I'm not the gifted public speaker Mr. Reeves is. He's smooth, I'm not. Pardon me, I'm an accountant by trade. My name is William Davis, I'm the owner of Absolute Waste. We are the largest independent in the area. We do about $6 million a year in revenue, just to give you a feel of the size of the company. We have 33 employees, and we have 27 trucks. We're not too small that we can't get things done. We're also not too big to lose focus on you. We have municipal contracts with Nuasis County, we have three of them. We had a storm years ago, there was a big tornado that hit about three years ago. We had no problem getting that up in two weeks. We don't fall behind on brush collection. I'm kinda map out everything for three months in advance on where we're supposed to be. So, and I stay on top of it, and we have good brush employees, if good employees at all. We have Clayburn County, we have two contracts. We have contracts with the city of Goliad, Orange Grove, Agua Dulce, Kennedy County, Goliad County, and we have two contracts with Refugio County, just to give you a sense for some of our municipal contracts. We have a full truck shop, do our own truck maintenance. We have a full container shop, welder, painter. On property that I own, I'm in it for the long haul. I own the property, the facilities, and the other thing I'd like to add is I don't pursue all bid opportunities. Some people, you know, bid everything that comes up. I've been spending the last four years off and on in Aransas Pass focusing on this place because this is, this is a contract that, an opportunity that I think is mutually beneficial for both of us. I believe a lot in community involvement. Historically, you've done a great job with the roll-offs for the house demolitions. I certainly wanna help that and increase it however you want to. I'm the decision-maker of my company, so I'm pretty easy that way. Doing community involvement like that's trying to, like trying to sell me Girl Scout cookies, you know? I'm pretty easy with that. Recycling is something I wanted to get, get really going in, in Aransas Pass, and we can do it at no cost. Do the right things, do community education, and I'm kinda been surprised over the years it had, something like this hasn't been kicked off before. So my proposal is to get some recycling going, not just pick up this to, to charge more money, it's trying to put some intelligence behind it. I'd be looking at brand-new carts, which takes only four weeks to get here, and they would have the city emblem on them. I like to do that for the places we do business. I think it means something. All the containers, commercial containers would also be brand-new. What you have now are 30-year-old containers all about town, and they're in a technology that for cities like this was outdated about 20 years ago. So we wanna get, get rid of the outdated technology, get some bigger cans, so they're not at your schools in a long line, and show, show some efficiencies. Want to say a little bit about the way I do my company. My employees are people that I know, I've involved in their lives, sometimes perhaps a little bit more than I would like, but I try to be good to the people. We have a 401K program, which is pretty unique for, I would say, medium to small company. All of our eligible employees participate. As an employer, I match their contributions 30%, which is, which is a pretty nice number. I know they appreciate that. There are also monthly safety programs and service programs to kinda give them a little bit more incentive. They do like the additional compensation, but they have to earn it. And I think if you check on all of the cities we do business with, they're quite pleased with the high level of service. So, and I wanted to mention, we've coordinated transition many times, whether it be with Republic Services that we've done with, one, two, three, four, five cities with seamlessly. Might have mentioned before, I used to work for VFI, that Republic Services is a different company, but it's the evolution of that. So I spent 14 years with VFI, so, you know, I certainly know the people over there, we work well together on transitions. Sometimes they're just coming my way, sometimes they're going the other way. That, that's just the way things work. We've als, I've also done transitions with the city of Robstown when they decided they wanted to be back in the business seamlessly, make it easy, and that should be, shouldn't be anything that's feared. It's actually fairly easy as long as people are cooperative, and if people are professionals, being cooperative, it shouldn't be much of a problem. So we're not contemplating any changes in service days or brush weekly areas, but we will stay caught up.
So schedules will be basically the same?
Basically the same.
I'll have to ask you two then, Mike.
Same question, Mayor?
Yeah, same question. Pickup dates still same, twice a week?
Yes, but it also depends on if you want the unlimited brush that was asked, or if you want to keep it as a digital extension. The sums will be the same. Same day, same total.
Is there anybody else, sir?
Sorry about that. Mayor, council, real quick, sorry to interrupt. You can go ahead and come up, I'm gonna be brief. James Blackford replied that there was no garbage, just straight-up trees and brush, no vehicles parked or any other obstacles, but thank you for the response. Sylvia Carrillo also responded that the VFW contribution was $100, community cleanup by Republic was, by Republic was a court agreement after last contract negotiation failed, automatic increases plus fuel charge. Their current offer went up $700,000 in savings. And James Blackford just replied again, I can live with his answer about delays, there's a lot of brush in town. I will get back with y'all if it hasn't been picked up by the end of the month, and that was in response to me suggesting that as well. So, thank you, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. Mark Kenny, one of the managers of the large-term restaurant. We're very concerned about making sure that we make the right decision with the city manager change and all that. I know you get a lot of, this is a very important thing to the large-term. We have garbage pickup in four days a week, and out of four days a week, we have a front-load truck, the neighbor right down the street also has a front-load truck. So we're very unique, not many front-load, if any of them do in the whole town. So our restaurant was built for front-load capabilities, switching over to a side-load, I don't think would be a good idea. But four-day pickup is what we need for the type of service that we do, and right now, the service that we've had has been impeccable. They're there before we open in the mornings, probably between 5:00 and 6:00 at one. The timing is very critical to us. Our dumpsters get full right quick. And with that's because our... And with that, it's because our trash cans are so heavy. We have a lot of solid waste. In the past, if our dumpsters got damaged or they got to the point where they did not look well, they replaced them fairly quickly. We also have health codes with good tops. If the tops don't close, help party come in. So the few times I've had issues, I've called and they were out immediately. So it's very important that y'all make sure that service wherever y'all go with is there for us. And so we're kind of a unique place. We can't miss a load. We miss a load on a Friday afternoon, we have the whole weekend, and we can't do that. We can't have food piled up opposite the dumpster. So anyway, I ask that y'all really consider maybe that hundred and twenty days to look over everything, check out the contracts, negotiate with them, make sure that they dot all the i's and cross all the t's. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a citizen's comment?
Good evening. I'm Henry Morales. I live at two forty-three West Wheeler. I have not been very satisfied with the service that our current provider has provided. They, I feel they do a very sloppy job in the residential area because they, it seems like they're in a hurry, and you see toders everywhere. I started taking pictures and I send them to Sylvia. And on Wheeler, there was about five, and this is a current thing. Every time that they go pick up the trash, and then the streets that meet up with Wheeler is McCambell, Rive, Houston. And I just took it upon myself to check and see how many toders. I don't, you know, I don't understand why some of the citizens are not here complaining because it makes our area look trashy because you have toders everywhere on the street. And we're here to clean up our city, and they're supposed to be an asset in helping us clean, and you see toders all over the place. I have some pictures here that I'd be happy to share, but anyway, I get my trash picked up on Mondays and Thursdays. If you take a drive during that time, you'll see them everywhere. I don't know if you have witnessed it, but in my area, I counted at least fifteen. But then, you know, I just gave up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Roy Vasquez, one zero zero three West Roads Avenue. This RFP that you all issue for the trash pickup, I wanted to comment real quick. I truly, you know, don't know why it was postponed in the first place. The transition, in my opinion, had nothing to do with it. You issued an RFP, you got three bids, review the bids, which one's the better bid? You vote on it. Anyhow, as far as the brush pickup, that is a big portion of this trash. You know, your trash pickup twice a week, I think that goes fairly smoothly with the exception of those totes that fall over and whatnot and make the subdivisions look trashy. But the brush pickup, all right, every spring, and I've only lived here about three years. So three springs during the springtime, it happens. They get delayed. It's going to happen. If it happens every year, you would think that you would adjust something in that, all right? My understanding from speaking with the brush pickup guy himself is he basically fills up his forty-yard dumpster and has it hold all the way to Robstown, and then comes back with an empty one. Fills that one up. In the spring, that literally could take fourteen houses if each one had six cubic yards of brush. That's it. You know how many blocks are in one section? A lot. You need to adjust something. We can't go two months without brush pickup. I already got my three six-yard piles sitting in front of my, in my, in my house. You know, there's no excuse for that. All right, so I'm hoping that in that RFP, those bids, that unlimited trash, that sounds really good to me, or unlimited brush. So I hope you guys take that into account when you choose the better bid, all right? Now, I've always told folks, and we, my wife and I, when we went to get bids for our house that we wanted to build, you know, we went to at least three contractors, take three bids, and the lowest one isn't always the better one. If you find the lowest one, hey, what does their work look like? Give me the last three houses you built. Same thing here. If these folks want, they want to be hired as the trash pickup, that we make those phone calls to those cities. Are they happy? You know, you got to dig deep into something like this, all right? So just hoping you all make the right decision for the citizens of Aransas Pass, all of us.
Is there anybody else? So you want to get up, Mr. Brummett, you sure? Mr. Brummett, you good? I thought he was going to get up. Okay, well, if there's no more citizen's comments, we're going to close it.
I think I'll bring in item five, our consent agenda. All of the following items of consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. We'll be enacted one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. But discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. It looks like we have items five, one through five, eleven?
Twelve.
Twelve? What's the favor of the council, the item?
I'll make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Fernando, you're up, sir.
All right, good evening, Council. The next item we have on the agenda is for our annual fireworks display with the City of Aransas Pass. This is a contract to bring on Mr. Troy to do our fireworks again for the Fourth of July. Right now, staff would suggest doing it on the Saturday because that allows families to come out. I know currently Rockport and QWIT are doing it on Saturday as well.
Is QWIT actually doing it this year?
Yes.
QWIT's doing it this year.
They are?
On that day.
Okay.
Rockport's on the fourth.
On the fourth, okay. Okay. Is there any questions from council this time? No? I hear most for approval for Senator twenty seventeen fireworks production contract with Western Enterprises Incorporated.
I'll make a motion when we approve the contract with Western Enterprises, Inc. for the Fourth of July fireworks, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
On the first, Brett?
First, on the first, okay.
On the first?
Is it?
Yeah, Saturday. Yeah, it's on the first.
Okay, Saturday, Saturday the first.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
The next item we have on the agenda, it's permission to re-advertise the RFPs for the brush machine. As you all know, we had awarded it, and then metals were found in the brush, so we canceled the contract. We want permission to re-advertise, and this time we're going to have a mandatory onsite pre-bid meeting and let the contractor know that they're bidding as is out there on the field. So we want permission to re-advertise it.
Is there any question from council? I hear most for approval for this, on seventeen?
I make a motion that we go out for RFP for mulching and grinding.
Second?
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
The next item we have on the agenda is from, request from AEP to grant them an easement on the shrimpery grounds right now where they built the new, built the covered area with the foundation. They need to run new electrical out there, so they're asking for us to grant them an easement to provide electricity.
Is there any trees in this season?
No, it's all clear.
Just grab.
Just grab. Any further questions from council? I hear most for approval, seven, three.
I make a motion that we approve the easement right away for AEP on Johnson Avenue.
Second?
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Mary, I'm abstaining for this since my husband works for AEP.
Seven, four, Fernando.
All right, this next item, at the request of two council members, to reconsider bringing the RFP for solid waste back to the council.
I'll make a motion when we approve the request for reconsideration of the RFP for solid waste.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
All right, and then that brings us to the next item, to consider and act on approving, awarding the RFP for trash pickup.
On Mr. Bakilian Calderon, what type of trucks do you guys use? Are they front loaders, side loaders? Well, I'm gonna, I was going to, sir?
If you can come up to the mic, sir?
Yep.
Our proposal is for front-load service, and I would agree with Mr. Davis that the side-load service is antiquated, and I think that the entities, business, community, other, will see the biggest savings from the front-load service. So I'd use front-load.
Is that, is that all you have in your fleet?
We have roll-off, front-load, side-load, and rear-load.
Okay.
Okay. We have a credit line, equipment credit line. I would have to buy new trucks for this contract. As I sit here tonight, I don't have enough trucks to do it, but I have plenty of resources that, in this industry, to buy trucks. I buy two thousand fifteen to two thousand thirteen, my side loads are two thousand twelve. There's various sources in our industry to get quality vehicles for any contract. In our Liberty contract, which I've referenced a few times at my speeches, it's a two thousand fifteen roll-off truck. It's a, it's a two thousand fifteen front-load truck, and it's a two thousand seven or a two thousand eleven rear-load truck, and a brush truck, and we were new a brush truck two thousand and twelve. So that's what we would do. We would obtain those vehicles with plenty of time to spare.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Davis, same question?
In answer, the equipment would be newly purchased. Right now, I have just about two, I have six front-load trucks that I have on my yard now. I also do commercial side-load. There's only two companies that right now do commercial side-load, that's myself and Republic Services. So if there's some alley pickups that has to be done with a commercial side loader because you have to get it from the side, you know, we can certainly do that for the customers and can keep them that way. But we'd be buying new automators for the contract as well, and brush trucks, so we'd have some equipment to buy.
The vehicles you have what year, sir?
Pardon me?
The vehicles, do you have right now, what year are they?
It varies anywhere. I just had a front loader come on my yard, it's a two thousand eleven. It depends on the condition of the vehicle, and I have the best mechanic that's out of Texas, so he picks my trucks for me. I tell him where I think they are, and he tells me whether they're there or not. So, but we try to buy newer models. You try to stay away from the two thousand eights, to be real honest about it. That's when they made some emission changes, and so you want something that's either newer than that or a two thousand seven, to be real honest about it. And it depends on hours and things like that, so. But you also look at route trucks, you're looking at spare trucks, too.
So as far as, like, you already have front loader trucks?
Yeah, I could do front loader, and I probably have a hundred cans on the yard to do. So I could do front loader within a week. The automated trucks, I'm only doing a couple of automated routes now because a lot of my contracts in Nuasis County, for instance, they want weekly bulky pickup and things like that. So I have rear-load trucks for that, and I run two automated trucks, and I'd be looking at getting a couple more. And I just have my own shop on my, I'd be able to hit those.
Okay.
I've been shot, in case.
Where do you dispose of your trash? I should have asked you to give us something to...
City of Corpus Christi, Cefé Valenzuela landfill. And the good thing about that one is that the rates never go up. So you might have been hit with disposal pass-throughs in the past. That won't happen for twenty years.
Mr. Kilian, did you hear that question I asked, where do you dispose of your trash also?
We also have a disposal agreement with City of Corpus, Cefé Valenzuela landfill. Don't jinx it and say it'll never go up because that'll be about the last time, and you know it's going to go up now. But we also dispose of industrial waste at Bellyhurst landfill and even take some stuff to El Centro. But we plan your city to be Cefé Valenzuela, City of Corpus.
One more question, I'm sorry. Come on back. How long have you been in business?
Our Kilian Calderon disposal's been in business two years. I've been in Corpus seven years. I used to be the general manager of a company called Texas Jack Waste. We had CC disposal before selling it to Progressive Waste Solutions. I've been in the industry twenty-three years, all told. My partner, Alvaro Calderón, has been here in Corpus thirty-three years in solid waste business. So we have a lot of experience behind us, and our drivers are experienced. That won't be, if you review my vehicles, our resumes are, I put them up against anybody's. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Davis, what was your years of experience again?
I can't count them. Only twenty-nine years, seems like it was yesterday. And my operations manager, twenty-two years, born and raised and sit in Texas. Hopefully, that's not a bad thing, but didn't even think about that. Dispatcher Corpus Christi, all, I'm not going to say how many years of her life, but her entire life. So we've been down here a long time, and most of my employees, we have like two employees have been with me less than a year. Most everybody is five, ten, fifteen years.
Mike, you, thirty-one years, right, in the business?
Yes, sir, absolutely, I have a haircut.
Six years.
Six years. May I? I mentioned you were cleared. So I have actually been, this is my second career. I was in hospitality, ran hotels and restaurants for over thirty years. I've been in the solid waste industry for six years. I thought it would be nice to bring hospitality, which is a service, to the solid waste industry. So I've been trying to make that happen. I will point out something that we brought up earlier that I think's important. Because the city staff retrieve comments, concerns, and questions regarding what needs to happen if there's a ball that's dropped, if I personally get a call, anyone can attest to this, I respond within twenty-four to forty hours. We take care of the problem quickly. Some of you have attested to this. I think in the past couple of years, there's been a disconnect between utility and corporate, our local office on trying to remedy problems, i.e. the gentleman that's waited for two months. If I had known about that, I would have taken care of that. There's a young lady in the audience who stressed her concerns about toders falling over. I am aware of that, and we do talk to the drivers on a regular basis. And if I get a phone call directly to me about those concerns like you would each of these owners of their small companies, they do get addressed quickly. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
I have a question about, we were talking about the front loaders versus the side loaders. Mike, aren't, because you're doing it now, isn't the majority of our trash pickup side?
That is correct. And even when Ms. Sylvia was here, there's been discussions that some of the businesses near thirty-five wanted a front-load system, and we have other routes that are front-load. We're able to offer some of your businesses newer, the front-load system, which they prefer and works better for their layout and their restaurant service.
All residential or side?
There's areas in town, yes, ma'am, that would probably have a challenge with going to a front-load system, the alleys, bakery, cafe, for example, that whole grid. So if you ask them right now if they'd want a front-load, they'd probably say no. So, you know, that's why it's important for you to be able to adapt to both systems. Would we love to convert Aransas Pass to front-load, mine is a few? Absolutely, because the majority of our municipality do have front-load system. We service George West, Beeville, and a few others that have a side-load still. But over the last three years, we have been converting them slowly to a front-load system. But we want to make sure it doesn't impact the customer based upon their layout. So, yes, ma'am. And our fleet, as you probably imagine, we have a plethora of trucks of different ages. But with our branding now, going to Republic from Allied Waste, we have to... but with our branding now going to Republic from Allied Waste, we have to make all of those trucks current, and we have to brand them, just to be our color blue with the proper logo, and so all those trucks are gonna be probably 2012 and up as we recycle them and replace them with newer models. So the side-load ones that pick up the garbage, those are all within 2012 and up. The brush trucks, we're replacing those on a continual basis every, every year, it's in our, our budget to do so, so you have that resource if you need it, if that's important to you. Thank you.
I'd love to brush pick up, where is that? Where is that?
Well, Carrie was asking, she wanted to know which of the three offered unlimited brush pickup?
The two that are offered are Killion and Republic.
Killion and Republic.
That's on that list? Is this the other?
No, she has. How many, Fernando, how many trash totes do we have in City of Aransas Pass right now?
That's a good question, I have them.
So more than a hundred?
A lot more than a hundred.
What do you mean by trash totes?
I believe I heard you correctly, you have a hundred right now, more or less, sir, right? For, um, sorry, Mr. Killion, but?
Davis?
Davis, yes. How many trash totes do you have available for transition, let's say?
Oh, for residential carts?
Yes, sir. The carts.
Well, I probably have 500 carts right now, but I'm, I would order brand-new from where Pacific is contracted, and that would arrive in four weeks.
Mr. Killion?
Exactly the same, in fact, you buy from the same company.
Mike, do you know how many totes you have here in City of Aransas Pass?
We have?
572 carts for all of the divisions in Corpus Christi. So our company that we hire to cart manage those, repair and replace, they're out five days a week, that's all they do. We focus on solid waste recycling, they focus on property place.
I just got from the finance director, we have 3,500 residential accounts.
3,500?
Yeah.
I have a question, is, this was just handed to us today?
Yes.
Okay. So that wasn't really part of the bid?
No.
Part of the bid process there, okay. Can we accept this if it's not?
No, because our RFPs were already accepted.
The RFPs, okay.
Yes.
Unless we, the council, I guess unless the council wants to deny our bids and then go out again. Does it have to be in favor of the council?
I have a concern, when is your current contract up?
In April, at the end of April.
At the end of April. What would be the cost to the city, Republic, that if you were, if we were to go a little bit longer, how much would you charge us per month?
Councilwoman, we would maintain the current pricing structure for commercial, residential on a month-to-month basis as needed, that is the choice of the council to.
And what, and what is that cost per month?
Ma'am, it just depends on, we have so many different prices for commercial, for the dumpsters, we have, as far as a residential price, Fernando, do you have the most current? Seventeen dollars?
Seventeen dollars for the whole month, for the whole city? Oh, okay, I was gonna say, let's just go in a month-to-month. Yeah. Now, is that in, do we have that in writing from Republic that it would be?
I don't think we have that in writing yet, we're looking about 120,000 a month right now with all the, the residential accounts we have.
Come on up, sir.
Um, two things. One, I took the time to come and review the bids, and you do have that in writing from Republic, because in your RFP, they said, "We're willing to go a month-to-month if it takes more time." So they have put that in writing, that they'd keep the same rates. Councilwoman Abrego, that was part of the RFP in the sense that your RFP said, "We'll negotiate with respondents about the franchise fee at the point when we bring you in for meetings." We've never been brought into the meeting, so when I was here expecting the bids with Sylvia, I mentioned that we would be willing to put the franchise fee, so it, what, it's not part of the bid tab used to make the decision. Would you agree with that, the, the sheet that I gave tonight, but yet it is part of what we offered from the beginning?
That's part after we negotiate, or we approve, then we can negotiate and do those adjustments, but the original RFP, the bid tabs is what the totals are for, for each one submitted.
And there was a sentence in the RFP about negotiating franchise fees further, so that's why that's there.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I have a question, what is the difference between an RFP and a bid?
Well, actually, I think the technical thing is that RFP, that Mike made the point of, is that RFP, y'all have the right to reject it, not go with the lowest, this is my, you know, minimal understanding of municipal law, and a, a bid process is locked and loaded, done deal, low price rules. So I think most of these I've seen over the last couple of years go to the RFP process, allows some flexibility.
That's not right, no.
Okay, then that's.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not, I, I didn't mean, I was kinda speaking out loud, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I know that my, I'm, our family company bids all the time, and we're always the highest, but we always get awarded to us because of our, how, how well we do our server, 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 because we're so, you know.
Okay.
All right, so that didn't answer my question, what's the difference between RFP and a bid?
Essentially the same thing.
Okay. All right, okay.
Is there any other questions from council? Again, I'll ask you, have you had a chance to sit with each one of these individuals?
No, I haven't, I was abstaining from meeting with anybody until the decision of the councils that there won't be any favoritism or any type of, uh, try to bribe or anything with anybody, so I decided not to meet with anybody until the council made their decision.
You get free pickup, huh?
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. Let's think about it, we got something. Okay, appreciate it, Fernando.
Well, normally at a bid meeting, you would have all the three bidders, all the bidders there, open the bids, discuss the bids at that point, right?
No, you just call out the bids that they were turning in.
You just call out the bids, okay. Okay.
Since you're the acting city manager, how do you like to do things?
What, what would you recommend?
I would recommend going with the lowest bidder.
That's what you would recommend?
Yes, sir. I agree.
Are we ready? So what's the favor of the council on this item?
Well, I make a motion that we award the bid to the absolute waste.
Second?
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both.
I think we need to tag one, again.
They're very fast.
I know, I know.
They needed more information.
I think we need more information.
Well, is, is that a no?
Not a no.
Three, three, two? Three, two. Fernando, twelve, one.
That's me, mayor, thank you, council. This is to approve a memorandum of understanding between the police department or the city and Tri-County Christian Service Center. This is to assist with emergency management, if there's particular questions. Here I have Lynn here, but basically what we're doing is, we're trying to delegate this organization to handle donations to the city. Donations can be a huge taking of city resources and stuff like that, so we want somebody to help with managing those incoming donations and making sure that they get properly allotted and stuff for the city. But if you have particular questions related to this MOU, I have Captain Pierce, the emergency management coordinator, here to answer those questions.
So basically, you just work with Tri-County Service Center on this?
Back in, when we had the May flow, we started receiving donations, and we recognized that as one of our shortfalls, that we didn't have a system to take those in, sort them out, and redistribute them. Tri-County already has that in place, and a major emergency, when we start getting those, we can direct everybody that direction, plus we can send extra volunteers there to help with that. They're very excited about it. The way the MOU is written, we don't have to send anything there, but we have the option to, so.
Sure.
And I put that particularly in their cash basis, because we started getting a huge amount of cash, we might not wanna funnel it all through them, we may have some other resources that we need to use it for.
Okay.
What, what kind of process we would have in place to keep track of how they disperse those, that cash donation that comes in?
That's gonna have to be up to them, it, it really is, and, uh, the, it says in the MOU that it is to be used for our citizens, so if they take in a whole bunch of stuff, they can't start sending it to send. It's for our citizens, up until the point that our needs are met, and then they can distribute it as they see fit.
And, and they pretty much do that anyways, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would we, I mean, just go back, would we have to have any accountability, or give them, ask a report from them, or nothing at all? Just give it to them like that? Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're just kinda trusting on their expertise, because this is something that they do on a regular basis. And when you start talking about donations, in certain situations, communities have just been overrun with sacks full of clothes, and the city has absolutely no possibility of dealing with that. We just, we'd be on the news throwing them in the new dumpsters, and, you know. So, using the Tri, the Tri-County Service Center, they can sort through that, take the good and the bad, and get it where it needs to be.
Okay, okay.
Good analogy, thanks Lynn.
Is there any other questions from council on this item? No? No, is there a motion for approval for twelve, one?
I'll make, I'll make a motion, we approve the MOU between the city and the Tri-County Service Center.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
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 Mary, abstaining from this, Rudy sits on the board.
This is gonna bring us to item fourteen, it's the second session. The city council will recess into the second session to discuss the following items pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Item one, section 551.071, consultation with the city attorney over a Naismith lawsuit. Item two, the section 551.074, personnel matters with the city manager recruitment. Appreciate everybody's time for being out here this evening, it's 7:58, we're now gonna go into the second session. If you're not here when we come back, I hope you have a blessed evening and have a good week. If you are, we'll try to be back soon.